This is so crazy. I cannot unmute them.
Can you hear me now Lori?
Yes, I can.
It said to press Alt A to unmute.
Yeah, that was to unmute. That's a shortcut. Can you click on your camera?
It's done the same thing to me Lori. It still says the same thing. You cannot start the video because it's supposed to stop it.
That's what mine says too.
And I have done nothing. I just got prompt. It says the host has asked to unmute your microphone. I said, okay. Okay, I think I got it. Try starting your video again.
I'm done.
Oh, thank God. Okay.
What do you do?
I don't know. Suddenly there's this more thing that allowed me to let everybody in. I don't know. I mean, it wasn't until I restarted it that I had this button. So, okay, so we need everybody to, if you would please, make sure that you bring your chat and participant windows up. The department heads will be turning our cameras off obviously. And then, just a reminder that the speaker view is up at the top. So you could either have the speaker view or the gallery view. You probably have two windows. One that shows everybody and their cameras and a second one that's probably showing the pursuant to Gallatin Jeff's shared screen. If he shared it, did he share it?
He's put it back up there.
Okay. So you all can see that too, right? Both screens. That will change to the agenda when he starts. So also on your chat panel at the bottom right, make sure you change that to, to be all panelists and attendees, please.
Change what?
At the bottom of the chat window where it says to all panelists, change, drop that down and change it all panelists and attendees.
I don't, I don't see that one.
Do you have your chat, do you have your chat window up at the bottom?
Okay, I got it. You're using the computer audio. Okay, I got that.
Turn your camera on Sean. There you go.
I'm all, alright, alright Kyle, I'll see you.
Okay, Bill, do you have your chat window up?
I got it. I found it. Yeah, thanks.
I got it. Jimmy, you see me?
Yeah.
Okay, good deal. We're there.
Just a reminder that this is all recorded. The chats will be recorded. Craig Hayes is having problems again. So let me get him on. His phone number ends in 269. Whoops, made me to myself. His phone number ends in 269.
There you are.
Can you hear me now?
Good John D.
I'm here Craig.
Alright, got you. Okay, alright, we're good. I just open and close. Can't see. Yeah. Only people want to say, alright, alright, we're ready.
Craig, I don't see you.
I don't know where I'm at.
You gotta click on your camera thing Craig and I think it'll upload it.
Where's the camera?
Be on your left-hand side down near the bottom.
Where?
Your car's down to the bottom and that bar will appear.
Okay. There we are. Okay. Got you. Got you. Yeah, can you with me?
I can.
I'm gonna sit in for Craig tonight.
You could probably do a better job than me or him.
What about Mr. Kev? He's not on there.
Lori, I'll get everybody back on in a minute.
Are you going with him? Okay.
Paige, can you hear me?
I can. I've got somebody on here that's a phone number that ends in 269. I'm not sure who that is.
Oh no, we got like two minutes.
Look at John Alexander. Were you, were y'all leaving me alone? I'm a masked man tonight.
They're both are. Him and Steve Fan both are there.
Hi Steve. Don Bandy finally shows up.
I don't see him. Y'all still got that big old white thing in the middle of the screen?
Yeah, but you can make, you can make your pictures where you can see your pictures and put that at the bottom if you want to.
How you do that?
Go to the bottom left-hand corner of the little, where your pictures are. And you'll see some arrows and just pull that arrow down to make it full screen and then that, then his agenda show up just in one spot.
Hey y'all, y'all got like one minute and I'm about to disappear. Good luck.
You found it.
Get down, get down, get glasses on.
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
You got one minute till showtime.
Okay. Paige, what do you and me do with the phone number? Just leave it? Yeah, nobody is responding. It may just be somebody attending and that's fine too. They hung up. Okay.
Hey Paige, remember that we have to make a statement at the beginning and we need to vote on that, make a determination.
So I can go ahead and call the order to, the meeting to order and then do that?
Yes.
And then John, I'm gonna have you pledge. Is that cool?
That's cool.
Yay. I mean not pledge, we're not gonna pledge. We're actually not gonna pledge tonight since we're not all where we have a flag. But we are gonna pray. I need you to pray.
Oh, I need, I'll do that. I'd be glad to do that. Just let me know when.
I will.
Take your mask off so we can see you Sean. Well, look, there he is.
So Nick, turn your camera off. It'll just be council on camera. There you go. And Paige?
Zach, I can still see Zach.
I can too. I only see Steve, Jimmy and me is all I see right now.
I see Sean, Steve and Jimmy and that's it.
I see everybody.
Hit that arrow, you can go up. Hit the arrow at the top.
Oh yeah?
What arrow?
Here's a man with a flip top phone telling, giving y'all instructions.
I don't know. Let's roll.
Messed up.
Let's go. Y'all ready?
Ready.
I've got a big John D. and everybody else is little. Now I got me. Okay.
Y'all saying I got a big head or what?
No, I said.
Alright, we ready?
Is that somewhere in Bay mister?
Yeah, my neighbor's house.
Thought you were already there.
No.
I don't know why mine picture looks so pixelated, but no way.
Picture worth a thousand words.
That's it.
Jeff, are you ready with Facebook?
John D., that makes you look about 10 years younger, man.
Well, good. Wouldn't you do this every weekend?
Okay, everybody, you need to stay in the center of your frame. You're fine. Steve is not. Craig is not. That's better.
Can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
John D.? That makes you look about 10 years.
You told me before now I'm down to 20. Although, give it 10 more.
Why is it repeating this?
Lost everybody over here somehow.
Steve, I can't see you anymore.
Yeah, I know.
Keep your camera Steve.
All I've got so.
I can't see Steve either. I'd rather see Linda anyway. I see Linda.
He's on there.
Alright, well I can see Craig.
Click those little arrows, the little lines that are in the bottom corner of the screen where you see the pictures. You can drag that and that'll extend your view so that you can see more people. Does that help you?
Hey, what are we waiting on?
See the little diagonal lines in the bottom of the center section where you have the pictures?
I don't have that.
Yeah, don't click anything.
Steve, you gotta quit clicking.
There's a big delay. My husband's watching it on TV.
We are hearing somebody's in the background.
It's, it's what we said about two minutes ago.
Oh no. Linda, I think your husband, I think the feedback from the Facebook or your husband's TV is coming into the speaker.
Can you turn that sound off you?
That's what it was, yeah.
Better.
They say it's better now.
Are we, are we streaming yet Jeff? Are we ready to start?
We're ready to start. We're not streaming on Facebook, but we are on the website and on
Still not coming in. I tried that earlier. Maybe Sheriff's coming?
I see you Mr. Fanny.
I can't see anybody right now.
We just got one out.
Lori or Jeff, give us some guidance so we'll know when we're ready.
John, you need a haircut.
I know.
We just need Jeff to let us know when he's ready to stream.
He can't go to the beauty parlor right now.
I got my bangs pulled back.
I won't hear him.
But Jeff, you are muted so we can't really hear you.
Jimmy's getting grayer. He can't get his color.
Sorry everybody, we are about to be live in Facebook in about five seconds.
You, can you hear my computer? We're about to start.
And, yeah, the Facebook actually had trouble and will not work. Try it one more time and then we'll just have to continue. It's loading again. Please stand by.
Y'all say hello to my daddy out at Morningside. He's watching.
Hey daddy, morning.
Talked to him yesterday.
Department heads, please make sure your mics are muted.
The Facebook is taking longer than normal to load. So I think we should just continue with the meeting.
Alright. Sounds good to me.
You're recording it Jeff saying post it later, correct?
Yes ma'am.
Very good. Okay, if that's alright everyone, we will get started. It is 6:08 on April 7th of 2020 and we are going to call this meeting of the Gallatin City Council to order. We need to begin this meeting in a way like we have not before and that is with an approval of this council to meet virtually. As we were allowed by the governor's orders a few weeks ago, I do need to make sure that we have agreement of everyone who is here.
Motion to agree.
We are meeting allows us to meet and conduct business by electronic means if this body determines that meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. So I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. And we do have to have a roll call vote since we are voting electronically. So I'll ask Ms. Ketchell if you would do that, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Yay.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Fan.
Here.
Mr. Fennel.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
And Mr. Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, it's unanimous.
Okay, we are approved unanimously to run this meeting electronically. And so we will begin the meeting now with an invocation and Councilman Alexander is going to offer a prayer for us this evening. Bow with me, please.
Thank you mayor. Let us pray. Eternal gracious God, once again, we come with Thanksgiving in our heart. We thank you for this beautiful day that has created. We thank you Lord of this technology. Now, Lord, we just pray that that will be in the midst of our meeting, that everything we say and do be pleasing in your sight. In all said, amen.
Thank you. I know we've already had a roll call vote, but Ms. Ketchell, I ask you to call the roll for us again.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Fan.
Here.
Mr. Fennel.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
And Mr. Overton.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you Ms. Ketchell. Before you have the minutes of the March 3rd, 2020 city council meeting and the March 17th, 2020 city council.
Most to approve.
Who was the motion by? I'm sorry?
Alexander.
Okay, motion by Councilman Alexander, second by whom?
Second.
By Councilman Hayes. Okay. Again, we'll have to have a roll call vote. Ms. Ketchell, if you would call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Approve.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Fan.
Yes.
Mr. Fennel.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, three unanimous vote.
Thank you. The minutes are approved. At this time of the meeting, we'll, we'll have public recognition on agenda-related items. I'm looking at our participants and I'm trying to see if there is anyone here that's not an employee or a councilperson of the city of Gallatin. My computer is moving slowly. You may, if you are here and you are connected via computer, you can raise your hand if you wish to speak. I don't see anyone that's in this meeting. Wait, I do have attendees. I'm sorry. I have, yes, I do have some attendees in this meeting. There's one phone caller with his phone number ends in 204. If that person would like to speak, you may do so at this time. You would need to, Lori, do you unmute them?
I did.
Okay, you are unmuted. If you would like to speak to something on the agenda, phone caller who ends in 204. If not, the attendees, the attendees who are connected via computer, you could raise your hand if you wish to speak. I'm trying to get my chat window open. Don't see anyone raising their hand, but my Lori, you're not seeing anyone raising their hand, are you? Because I'm not getting that window to open for me. No ma'am. Okay, very good. So I see no one wishing to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items. So I will declare it closed. There's also some guidance that I should have offered at the beginning of the meeting and I didn't. There is a chat window on this live meeting. You may certainly chat, but this is a part of the public record. So if you want to make a comment or chat, that does become a part of the public record. It is a good opportunity though, if for some reason I failed to recognize you and you wish to be recognized, that would be a good place to type a message. Just recognize me would be enough. So that moves us forward, I think now to mayor's comments. I do have a few things that I would like to mention to you all. It's been a while since we've met because of the COVID situation in our community. And I think you all know by now that the situation in Gallatin has not been a good one. It's been a very, very difficult few weeks, certainly for some individuals in our city, but I think for our community as a whole. The latest report today is that in Sumner County, we have 364 cases of people infected with COVID-19. We have had 15 deaths at Sumner Regional Medical Center. Our county is leading the state in deaths right now at this time. I know we're at at least 18, but I'm not sure that that is the, the, the accurate number. I know of at least 18, but I'm not sure that's the accurate number. 15 of those deaths were at Sumner Regional Medical Center, 10 of those were patients at the Gallatin Center for Rehabilitation and Healing. So as I've been saying for the last couple of weeks, those patients, their families, their friends, they need your prayers and so do our healthcare workers. The healthcare is both at that, healthcare workers both at that facility and at our Sumner Regional Medical Facility and all those who work as first responders. I've always had a whole lot of respect for what people in healthcare and for first responders do, but after seeing them in action in such dire circumstances this past week or 10 days, wow, was all I can say. They, they truly are amazing and talk about some committed people who do the best job you could want. I'm so proud of our Sumner County folks and the way that they have responded and taken care of people. And I would encourage everyone just to share a word of thanks or, or send a card, send a mail, anything. These people deserve so much recognition from all of us. I will say that the reports from yesterday and today do shine a glimmer of hope on all of us. We are hopeful that that curve is beginning to flatten. That does not mean that it's time for us to become complacent. It's actually time to be more vigilant, sorry, or vigilant. Because we can perhaps even flatten the curve more and shorten the duration of this crisis if we continue to do what we're doing. And that means all the things that you have heard about repeatedly for the last few weeks, but particularly the social distancing. To give you some inspiration, a few weeks ago, the modeling for Tennessee looked pretty dire. It was not a good picture at all. It's still not a good picture, but the several thousand deaths that were projected have been reduced substantially. So that to me is proof that social distancing is working and that we all need to continue to be diligent and to do as we're supposed to. And as people from Gallatin, I would ask that we do those things with grace and kindness towards each other and help others find hope. Because people, people are having a hard time right now for so many reasons. We will continue to keep you informed. And just an important thing now is to find some hope, be cautiously optimistic and let's not get hit by a second wave of spikes and infections. And hopefully that's where we are. I do also want to update this council, since the original state of emergency order, we have extended that. Our third extension will actually be effective today. The other orders that have been issued from the mayor's office include a suspension of utility cutoffs by Gallatin Public Utilities. Just for your information too, the Gallatin Department of Electricity, their board is also suspending electricity cutoffs. Now for anybody that's watching, I did want to be clear, those bills will still be due. But during the state of emergency, there will be no cutoffs of utilities or electricity. We also did an order that closed all of our city buildings. And just last week, we had to do an order that suspended the issue, the issuance of any door-to-door solicitation permits because we actually had someone who was applying for a permit. So those are the orders today. Certainly we can discuss anything that you all want to discuss under other business, but right now I will conclude mayor's comments and move on to the regular agenda. And the first item on the regular agenda is the approval of an audit contract. And for that, I'm going to recognize our finance director, Ms. Rachel Nichols.
Rachel Nichols Finance. Every year we have to have approval for contracts for professional services over $10,000 and our audit contract qualifies as in that category. This year we bid the audit and the firm that we're proposing for the new year is Blankenship. They came in substantially lower than the other four firms that voted or that responded. And we just need approval to enter this contract.
Almost.
Second.
Where are they at, Rachel?
They're out of Goodlettsville. They actually have four locations, but the office that we'll use is in Goodlettsville.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Nichols? Okay, we do have a motion and a second. With that, we will vote on the approval of the audit contract. Ms. Ketchell, if you would take a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Fan.
Yes.
Mr. Fennel.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Overton. Mr. Overton.
We have lost his audio.
Okay. Well, mayor, we have a, we have six eyes and Mr. Overton not voting.
Okay, thank you very much. So the contract is approved. That does, thank you Ms. Nichols. That does conclude our regular agenda and it moves us now to other business, at which point I will open the floor for our panelists for other business. That can either be our department heads or our city council. You might raise your hand just so I can see who to call on. Yeah, I'm seeing no one indicating that they wish to discuss other business.
John D. raising his hand.
Oh, okay. I meant virtually, but that's fine too. Mr. Alexander, go ahead.
Oh yes, I just want to echo what you had said about our emergency workers and our police people and fire department, everybody in the first aid, what they're doing here in the city of Gallatin. And just ask everyone to continue to pray and encourage each other that maybe this thing will soon be over, but take all necessary precautions, stay in and go out unless you just absolutely have to. And please continue to wash your hands every chance you get. Thank you mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. I think encouragement is the best word of the day. Anyone else wishing to speak under other business? You're welcome to jump in. Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna move on to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. This time I'll go back to the attendees list and if there are any attendees who wish to speak, you may do so. Lori, do they have an option to raise their hand if they're an attendee and wish to speak? I'm not real sure how that piece of this works. Yes ma'am, if they are an attendee on a mobile app or on, at the computer, there is a raise your hand option for them. If they are on a phone.
Yes, ma'am. If they are an attendee on a mobile app or on, at the computer, there is a raise your hand option for them. If they are on a phone, they do not have that option.
We do not have any phone callers at this time. So if there is anyone who wishes to speak, raise your hand, and I will recognize you, and we will make sure you can be heard. Hearing from no one who indicates they wish to speak, I will declare public recognition on non-agenda-related items closed. And with that, folks, we'll entertain motion to adjourn.
Most approved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton. Second by Vice Mayor Camp. Alright.
Good job, everyone.
Yep, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Don't stay healthy.
Yes, absolutely. Everyone, have a lovely evening. Please stay healthy. Let us know how we can help, and take care of yourselves. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Lori, for everything you've done.
Yes, thank you, Lori.
Y'all are very welcome.